To be postponed, Councilmember Roberto.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to postpone Item 13U for four weeks. They're still working through with planning on going through Planned Residential, and just need another four weeks.
Okay, motion made to postpone Item 13U for four weeks has been made and seconded. Any questions or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to postpone carries. Any other items to be postponed? Okay, are there any items to be added by motion? Okay.
Got one.
Did you have an item to add by motion?
I do, well...
Uh, go ahead.
We've, we discussed when would the appropriate time to do this was, but it looks like Item 12H should actually be included under 5D after the memorial, which is 12G. So what I was gonna make a motion to do is to move Item 12H to 5DII.
Okay, got it. Okay, does everyone understand we're moving the IBW after the memorial? Everyone understand? The motion's been made and seconded. Any questions or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion to modify the agenda passes. Any other items to be added by motion? Okay, let's move on to Item DI, the memorial, 12G bill. Councilmember Ryder.
Yes, not quite used to this new agenda format where we jump right into some things. All right, well, this resolution, I'd like to read the resolution to honor Bill Williams, who was a very integral part of our community. The Williams family members are here tonight for us to share with them this memory of them. So I'm gonna read the resolution and then I'll bring it down to you guys. This is a resolution of the City of Knoxville to honor the memory of Bill Williams. Whereas Bill Williams was beloved WBIR anchor emeritus and passed away at the age of 91 on August 18th, 2025. And whereas Mr. Williams was born in Missouri in 1934 and later attended college in Oklahoma while debating career as a, while he was debating a career as a minister or a concert violinist before making the fateful choice to pursue journalism. And whereas Mr. Williams worked in television news and video, radio broadcasting before coming to Knoxville in 1977 as anchor of WBIR's 11 o'clock newscast, sharing important stories of home and beyond. And whereas Mr. Williams became known as the Walter Cronkite of East Tennessee, a highly regarded and awarded journalist that insisted on truth and accuracy in his own work and that of his colleagues. And whereas in 1980, Mr. Williams inaugurated the Monday's Child feature of the WBIR newscast, which ran for more than 30 years, profiling 1,500 special needs children and helping more than 1,000 of them find families. And whereas Mr. Williams made a difference in East Tennessee through his reporting of families struggling in Appalachia and areas of extreme poverty, leading to the creation of Mission of Hope, which serves over 20,000 children and families each year. And whereas Mr. Williams retired from the WBIR anchor desk in 2000, but continued his work with Monday's Child, Mission of Hope, hosted telethons to help children and the Great Smoky Mountains, and supported charities like Buddy's Race Against Cancer and the Bill Williams Fishing Tournament that raised money for a number of local charities. And whereas Mr. Williams was honored in 2010 by his WBIR colleagues and the City of Knoxville, when the street alongside WBIR was renamed Bill Williams Avenue through unanimous support by City Council, Metropolitan Planning Commission, and the city's Public Property Naming Committee. And whereas Mr. Williams spent 10 years with the University of Tennessee Pride of the Southland marching band as their announcer at Neyland Stadium and other stadiums across the country. And whereas Mr. Williams was devoted to his wife of 36 years, Wanda, his children, and his grandchildren, building memories with them throughout his life and will be missed by his family, colleagues, and friends. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Knoxville. The City, the Council of the City of Knoxville wishes to honor the life and achievements of Bill Williams and to express to the members of the family its sincere condolences upon the occasion of his passing. This resolution shall take effect from and after its passage, the welfare of the city requiring it, this 28th day of October, 2025.
Thank you, Councilmember Ryder. Would the family like to come up and receive it? Or do you want to deliver it to them? Let's, let's have a round of applause for Mr. Williams.
Because we need a motion.
Oh, we need a motion, okay.
Yes, thank you. I'll walk over there. Before I walk down there.
Are they coming up there?
Well, oh. Before we go any further, I'm probably doing this in the wrong order. I'd like to make a motion to pass this resolution.
Okay.
Do we have a motion to say? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm running the board.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I know there's no one opposed. So, thank you, Councilmember Ryder. And if you would like to say, make a comment.
Just wanted to say thank you on councils, City Council and city leadership. Just thank you on behalf of the family, just saying a few words. You know, the story of Bill is also a story of this great community. You know, he, he used to say that he was just a messenger, but the message was emphatically received over the years. And he loved this community, he loved this town, he was proud of this place we call home. And so thank you all for doing this proclamation, and y'all have a good evening.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just want to add a couple of things. I was, I mentioned to the family earlier, I think one of the incredible things about Mr. Williams is that he came to our community sight unseen. That's part of the story. It was very hard to take all the great things from his obituary and from the station's media reports and pack it into a resolution that reflected all the things that he did in our community. But Mr. Williams came here, spent his entire life, built his family here, and built a legacy. And I think the things that he stood for are very important at this time and moment. And that is accuracy and truth in reporting. He understood the importance of getting information to families and people across our community, what was going on. The other, one of the notable things about Mr. Williams is he was the first Knoxville area reporter to broadcast by satellite here. I believe it was for the Butcher Brothers reporting, maybe. So first satellite report out of Knoxville to the rest of the world. So he had a big impact, he was a role model for everyone in his field, and we appreciate you all.
Thank you, Councilmember Ryder, and thanks to the Bill Williams family for being here. And we appreciate your father, grandfather, very much. Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Ryder. Now we'll move along to the next resolution. Ms. Hopper?
12H is a resolution recognizing the centennial anniversary of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 760 and celebrating the work and community involvement of the members of Local 760 in Knoxville and our region.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Shall we go ahead and vote on it? Or do you want to read it? I'm, I'm not used to doing these resolutions, so.
I mean, I think we can vote on it and then we can have them come up.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Roberto, would you like to read the resolution or share some commentary about it?
What I thought I would do, Mayor, is just call up the business manager, Tim Oaks, and have him tell us a little bit about the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 760. We all have grown very used to flicking switches and lights coming on. And these are folks that help make sure that happens for all of us all the time. So just want to say thank you to all, all of the IBW Local 760 folks who, who get out and do all the work that we need you to do and, and to make sure the lights stay on for us all.
Thank you, Andrew. Again, I'm Tim Oaks, I'm the business manager. I brought my wife, Sharon Oaks, and our training director, Mr. Todd. What's your last name? Todd Liggins. Andrew, thank you so much for recommending this. How appropriate, Mayor, thank you for being and signing this for us. How appropriate it is tonight that we follow Bill Williams. Our address, our fiscal address is 1530 Bill Williams Avenue.
Oh, wow.
And right across the street. And we moved there in 1961. We actually owned Greystone. We sold that to WAT in 1961 for $85,000. So, but they've had it ever since, and we've been there. We are in the process of building a new hall over where our training center is, off of Central Avenue Pike. So we're gonna dump in about $4 million back into our community here as soon as we can get everything approved and get everything, everything is rolling. So, but like you said, Andrew, we've been around for 100 years. If you walk into our hall, you'll see a memorial wall over to the left, and my family is all over that wall. Tristians running to blood. If your lights don't turn on, don't turn to me. No, you turn to me, we'll, we'll help you out. We, we're very proud of our training, we're very proud of what we do. We have over 3,000 members. And when I came on staff in 2017, we had just under 1,600. So we're growing, growing, growing. We have linemen, we have TVA, we have X-10, Y-12, UCore, of course, TVA. And our local contractors, the Bescos, the Tennessee Associates, they keep our guys employed, they make good money, they have good benefits, and we're very proud of who we are. And I'll talk all night if you let me, so I'll just shut up. Baby, am I missing anything? Todd? Todd, we've got about 130 apprentices right now, it's a four-year program. It's over off Central Avenue Pike. If you're going between merchants to Callahan, you'll see the bug just right here up on a sign, and the sign will say, "Earn while you learn." That's our building right there, we own that building. And that's where our new hall is gonna be. So thank you again to the whole council, it's an honor to be here. And we will display that proclamation with pride, along with our 100-year plaque in our local. Thank you all.
Councilmember Robert, Thomas?
Yes, I just wanted to say how much we all appreciate what you folks have done for the working people in this area. And also, I wanted to add that not only do you represent the, the workers here and make sure that they have good working conditions and benefits, but you also are involved in the community a lot. And per this resolution, you've been working directly with United Way of Knoxville, Knoxville Salvation Army, Knoxville Firefighters Association, Knoxville Chamber of Karma Commerce, the Corbella Shrine, children's charities, and others. So I just wanted to acknowledge that not only are you fulfilling your role simply as a union representative, but you also extend yourself even further out into the community. So congratulations, and here's to the next successful 100 years.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmembers, and appreciate Mr. Roberto for passing that along. And again, congratulations on 100 years of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers right here in Knoxville. Okay, moving right along, the consent agenda. Is there a motion on the consent agenda? Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. You might help remind me which ones, which ones are off now. Okay. Okay, time now for my mayor's report. This, this new agenda structure is a little different for me too, so. Okay, time now for the mayor's report. Oh, did you, no, okay. Okay, thank you for your patience. First, I want to start by acknowledging, as most of you all know, that we are coming together tonight with heavy hearts after losing one of our own in a tragic accident over the weekend. KPD Lieutenant Gordon Gwathney drowned Sunday morning on an out-of-state hunting trip. Gwathney was known by most, and certainly that's how I knew him, first as Officer G. He was well-known, especially throughout the East Knoxville community, where he served almost his entire 30-plus career on patrol. And he really got to know the community there, and the community got to know him. Officer G was the first-ever school resource officer at Austin East High School and was recognized as KPD's Officer of the Year in 2013 and nominated for that award again in 2019. I will remember him personally as someone who always took the time to really get to know the people he pledged to protect and serve. He truly loved his job, and you could tell. And, and I think it's possibly because it wasn't a job to him, but a calling. So I know the city will be forever thankful that he served with us, that we know him, and the people of this community are very grateful for his service. And I'd like to ask for us all to pause for a moment of silence for Officer G, his family, and all his loved ones. So a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Moving on, tomorrow, as councilmembers know, we are going to be having a celebration. We'll be cutting the ribbon on another affordable housing complex in Knoxville. The Callahan Flats ribbon cutting will be at 3:00 PM tomorrow, rain or shine. And this new 88-unit complex is at 1511 Callahan Road, and everyone is invited to attend. It's gonna be a really happy occasion. I also want to take a moment to recognize Parks and Rec Director Cheryl Ely and her entire team. Is Cheryl here tonight? Anyhow, she might be watching from, from home. But anyhow, they did, our Parks and Rec team was honored a number of times at the recent Tennessee Parks and Rec Association Conference. Our accessibility upgrades at the Cal Johnson Community Center were recognized along with several individual team members. Randy Love for outstanding aquatics programming, Kelly Sullivan for innovative and creative arts programming, Erin Browning's presentation on our Parks Master Plan process was the best-attended conference session. And Chris Hearn was nominated as the East District Chair. So congratulations to everyone from our Parks and Rec team. Quick reminder about our rules of decorum, we are here to do the city's official business. Those who wish to speak either to a specific agenda item or during public forum need to sign up with the city recorder before 4:00 PM. Do not use profanity, and when speaking to specific agenda items, you must stay on topic. Remarks must be germane to the question ahead of the assembly. That is, statements must have bearing on whether the pending motion should be adopted. Those who fail to adhere to these rules will be ruled out of order. For those who are listening, please note, if you disrupt a public meeting, you will be asked to leave or escorted out. Thank you in advance for everyone's respect for these rules. And that does it for my mayor's report. Are there any reports of committees? Are there general councilmember announcements? Councilmember Roberto.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind everybody that there's two days left to take advantage of the convenient times and locations for early voting. We've got a city election going on right now, so hopefully you'll take advantage of those times. It ends on October 30th. If you don't vote in early voting, then you'll have to vote on November 4th at your assigned precinct. So don't forget, you've got to go to your assigned precinct and not the early voting locations if you go then. The only other thing I want to remind everybody is this Friday is Halloween, so we'll have a lot of kids out on the street. So let's, I'll try to drive a little slower and be a little more careful, because we'll have a lot of kids walking around. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no further lights, we'll move on to Item 10A.
10A is an ordinance to amend Chapter 2, Article 4, Division 3, Section 2-614 of the Knoxville City Code to designate the lesser of $10 million or 22% of additional local option sales tax revenue generated from any tax rate, I'm sorry, any rate increase approved in an election occurring on or before November 4th, 2025 to the City of Knoxville Affordable Housing Fund.
Motion made to approve and second it. Councilmembers, we have two people signed up to speak in favor of this item. First is Sue Stevens. Ms. Stevens, if you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes to address council.
My name is Sue Stevens, and I live at 3930 Valleyview Drive, 37917 in Knoxville. And I'm here tonight in support of the ordinance that's before you. And then with a number of my Justice Knox colleagues that are here wearing red. All Justice Knox members, will you wave your hand at the city council members? I've been a Justice Knox leader since we started in 2016, and every year I've hosted a house meeting. House meetings are gatherings of eight to 10 people, sharing stories about their concerns and what keeps them up worrying at night. And every year, I hear stories from people worried about housing. I think it was back in 2017 when a friend of mine, a grandmother like me, came to my house meeting, and she shared that her granddaughter and her granddaughter's husband both had full-time jobs in the service industry. Each made only $10 or $11 an hour and struggled with finances. And so they made a hard, hard decision to send their children to live with grandparents in Virginia. Because they could not afford their rent and the necessary expenses to care for their children, their high housing costs literally broke their family apart. That and many other stories like it drove me to work on our Justice Knox Affordable Housing Team. Through researching and meetings, we worked together with the mayor's staff and city council members to put together our current housing fund. And I've been very heartened to see the results. At another ribbon county cutting back in 2021, I saw the family-friendly, beautiful apartments on Holston Drive that has places for children to play and even secure places for each family to safely store their children's bicycles and other objects. It gives me hope to hear about the permanent support of housing that continues to be built with the housing fund. At its roots, we know homelessness is a housing problem. A while back, I came before you to advocate for the development of affordable duplexes by Habitat for Humanity in my own neighborhood. I understand that our Affordable Housing Fund will help make these new homes possible. They will offer not only safe and affordable housing, but also a way towards homeownership for families who are working hard and need good homes to raise their children. If you stop and think about what your home means to you, it's a place to rest and relax, to gather and feed your family, a place to feel secure, to heal when you're sick, to shelter from harsh weather. Safe, decent, affordable housing makes it possible for people to thrive and live well, making our community also thrive. Thank you for supporting affordable housing in our city.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak in favor of this item is Rick Carter. Mr. Carter, if you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes to address council.
Thank you. My name is Rick Carter, and I live at 5606 Green Valley Drive in Knoxville. I'm an associate priest at the Church of the Good Shepherd, a Justice Knox congregation in Fountain City. And I'm speaking in support of the ordinance. I want to talk about the success of our city's Affordable Housing Fund using some stories I have heard. While it is true that we continue to hear many stories of struggle, we are also hearing stories of hope. Last year, in one of our fall house meetings, I heard the story of a woman who was battling cancer. During her treatments, her lease wasn't renewed, and suddenly she was facing homelessness. Her niece stepped in, searching everywhere for an affordable housing apartment with no success. Then with the support of the Affordable Housing Fund, Inskip Flats opened. Because our city invested in affordable housing, she moved into a home that provided the respite she needed to keep up with her cancer treatments, and she is doing well today. Recently, I heard the story of another Justice Knox Network member. 10 years ago, she was injured on the job and couldn't afford the surgery she needed to keep working. She lost her job and was evicted from her apartment. For the next decade, she worked, she was able to find work, but still couldn't afford a place of her own. She slept on a friend's couch and rented rooms, where she often didn't feel safe as a single woman. But she never gave up. 18 months ago, she applied for a housing voucher. Recently, she turned 62 and finally got the call, and apartment at First Creek was available. First Creek, as you know, was made possible with the support of our local Affording, Affordable Housing Fund. This month, our network member will move into her new home. After 10 long years, she will finally have a safe, stable housing and a new beginning. This is what we want for all of our seniors. This is what we want for our families. This is what we want for all those in our city who work hard at jobs essential to making our city run. Honestly, this is what we want for everyone who's seeking a roof over their head. This is what we want for all of our neighbors. Safe, stable housing for a safe, stable community. Thank you for voting yes to this ordinance so that we might take one step closer to a just, compassionate, and thriving community for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, that concludes people who have signed up to speak on this item. Is there any further question or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
12A is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Health Equity Incorporated to provide administrative services for the city-sponsored flexible spending account and health reimbursement account for city employees at a projected annual cost of $76,650.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12J is a resolution authorizing the mayor to amend the contract with Gretchen Smith for the Gay Street Bridge Repair Project, increasing the contract amount by $64,130 for a new contract total not to exceed $512,630.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12K is a resolution authorizing the mayor to amend the contract C-25-0160 with Charles Claybo and Sons Incorporated for the Gay Street Bridge Repair Project, increasing the amount by $190,070.50 for a new contract total amount not to exceed $2185,000.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Councilmember Ryder.
Yeah, I just have a question for Mr. Claybo. In discussion with staff, these adjustments, these projects are, this one and the one we voted on right prior to it, they're still within budget, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and these adjustments are necessary because, I think it's important for the public to understand why we're voting on these.
As we entered into the initial contract, it was, if you remember, it was by emergency. We didn't have all the analysis done.
Okay.
And so through that process, we've determined that we're converting this to bikes and Peds only.
Okay.
And so in order to make safe connections at each end, this work was required.
Okay, and these numbers and adjustment, keep it in budget. It's just fine-tuning the amount that, because we didn't approve the previous specific numbers.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ryder and Mr. Claybo. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12Q is a res- Oh, L, I'm sorry, apologies.
Okay.
12L is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Knoxville Knox County Community Action Committee to provide $125,000 in 2025-2026 Tennessee Housing Development Agency Emergency Solutions Grant funding to provide rapid rehousing services to individuals or families experiencing homelessness in Knoxville.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries.
12Q is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to award an amount not to exceed $300,000 from the Historic Preservation Fund to Volunteer Housing Partnership as the sole member of HGTP LLC for the restoration and reuse of the historic Giffen School.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
13S is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification of property located at 305 West Vine Avenue from DKG District to DKB District, leaving all special purpose and overlay districts unchanged, Lee Birch applicant, 6th District.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Oh, council member Ryder, sorry.
It's okay.
I didn't see that.
I know, I wasn't fast enough. Ms. Poyer, I'm sorry, did I say your name correctly?
Close, it's Port J, but that's okay.
Yes.
Sorry.
There was some discussion at Planning Commission about this particular agenda item. So can you, for public discussion, because I think that's important, the reason, the rationale for the request for the change is because the current zoning of the property requires commercial on the ground floor, correct? Am I correct in that?
Yes, that's correct. It's Article 5.2. B. 1 for reference, and that specifies that multifamily use will only be allowed in the DKB and DKE zones, and so that's one of the reasons for requesting the DKB.
Okay, and so, I don't know, so the rationale for why this was, this was not recommended by planning, but the reason that it passed is because the thought is that there just isn't going to be enough demand for commercial in this particular spot.
That was part of it. I think the commissioners also felt like there were sort of two extremes, so one zone required all residential on the ground floor, or you could do a mix, but there wasn't really a lot of flexibility within the standards. There was some talk about that, but, but really, they just felt like this particular location with the slope of vine would make it really challenging to put commercial development in that area and expect people to walk around with shopping bags and things like that. That was one of the comments that was made.
Okay, and another site up the hill also had a similar rezoning as well, the one that's currently under development, I believe, the Elks Lodge former site was also rezoned.
We have had a couple that were rezoned. I'm not sure exactly which one you're talking about, the Elks Lounge or Lodge?
I think it might have been Eagles. It's right across from the condos there.
Yeah, it had the same thing. It got rezoned because it was commercial.
Okay.
The zoning would have required commercial, and they requested this. I just, do you guys, so our current code requires the commercial use on the ground floor because the idea is to activate and engage kind of the pedestrian as they walk by. And I understand this is on a hill, but is, what is the position of the Planning Commission? Like, is there some thought to revising the code, or is it just going to be, we look at these things on a case-by-case analysis?
Yeah, well, the discussion was more like they wished there was some flexibility, but they didn't actually, you know, ask us to look into it or kind of put that forward as part of their motion, or it was just sort of a general idea that they wished there was more flexibility in the code.
Okay, I just, rather than just vote on it, I just thought it was important to have this conversation.
If I could just-
Okay, sure, go ahead.
Interject, I failed to notice that there's someone signed up to speak on this item, so if we could-
Okay.
Pause your conversation, and then I'll call on that person, and then we can continue.
Sure.
Drew Harper, signed up to speak in favor of item 13S. Mr. Harper, I apologize for not seeing that till now. If you could come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, will you set the clock for three minutes, please?
Oh, thanks.
You'll have up to three minutes to address council.
I'm Drew Harper, I live at 1205 Kenyon Street. I liked the conversation that was happening, so I was happy to perhaps not speak, but, because it seemed like good information was getting out there. And like I said, I'm Drew Harper, I'm vice president of Yes Knoxville. We promote more housing opportunities, more transportation opportunities, and better public spaces. As Lauren was saying, of course, the ideal would be street-level activation of things other than residential. That's kind of what we nerd out about in our meetings and stuff, but we recognize that more housing options overall are important to welcome more neighbors to Knoxville, and we know that the multitude of regulatory barriers, the delay in kill projects, increase housing costs, decrease available housing supply, and make it more difficult for all kinds of people to find a place to live. So with this item, and I think we were getting there anyway, like so many others, I encourage us not to let the perfect be the enemy of the good, and my controversial statement, going out on a limb here, is that housing is good. So, many downtown buildings that we know and love are residential only already, the Glencoe, the Elliott, the Keyhole, Temple Pitman, Churchillah, Summit Towers, Menville Manor, Kendrick Place Townhomes. And this is not a new idea, turning Knoxville into somewhere else, this is part of Knoxville's history. In fact, I'm told that perhaps even the Blunt Mansion in James White Fort had ground-level That was funnier in my head. This proposed development will create homes for people. It might not be perfect urbanism, it might not be perfect design, it might not be where you or I would choose to live, but we shouldn't deprive our neighbors of that choice. Ground-level residential in this case is one unique granular ingredient, crucial to an all-of-the-above approach toward increasing housing containability and toward building the kind of vibrant, diverse Knoxville where many different kinds of people are proud to go home. So, thank you for supporting more housing.
Thank you, council. That concludes, people signed up to speak to item 13S. The representative of the developers here, Taylor Forrester, if you have questions, he's available. Council member Fugit.
Thank you, mayor. Now that we started down this road, I'm going to say something. I think part of the reason I support the rezoning for this is because what you're beginning to have back there is a residential enclave in the part of the city. I mean, it's condominiums, this will be residential, it is directly across the street from the Crown Plaza and its garage, backs up to the other housing development that Mr. Hill is doing at the corner. And so I do think, when it becomes financially feasible and shops want to be there, a developer will make that happen if they, if uses change over time. But right now, the use is not for commercial that can be supported in that, in that part of the city downtown. So I think that's why you have, that's why these things come to us in addition to the Planning Commission, because there is nuance to be considered. And so I think while the zoning code and its desire for ground floor to re, to activate street level, to get pedestrians moving and spending money downtown, and if, if the demand is there and the services are required, they will come. So I think for now, this is a good decision.
Thank you. The law director, Mr. Swanson, wanted to add a point of information pertaining to the law.
Let me just say, in response to council member Ryder's question, and following along with council member Fugit, this is not an issue that is clear-cut on either side. There are arguments to be made on both sides, and I can tell you based on conversations with our attorney Christina McGrone's, that they are having discussions about whether adjustments to the code can occur to make this work better. Maybe one size does not fit all here, and so they're taking a look at it, and whether they'll come up with the right solution or not, I can't tell you that, but I can tell you they're looking at it.
Thank you. Council member Thomas.
Yes, just, I'll just make a couple of comments. I noticed that the staff recommendation was to deny, as it was kind of pretty much alluded to, and then it wasn't unanimous at the Planning Commission. On the other hand, density, which I scrutinize a lot, as people know, is usually a favorable thing for the downtown area. Also, I'm going to, just on first reading, abstain on this one, just, I'd kind of like to study it a little bit more. Councilperson McKenzie, it's her district, and she's not here, I don't know that I'll vote to deny it, but this one I kind of want to look at a little bit more thoroughly because I really have a lot of respect for the planning staff's recommendations, and also, it does alert me when it's not a unanimous decision on Planning Commission. So I'm just going to abstain on first reading and study it between now and then, and we may have some more conversations after that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor of this on first reading, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Oh, 13T was on consent, okay. Next is public forum. First person signed up to speak is Jeff Tomlin. Is Mr. Tomlin present? Okay, I guess he's not present. Next person signed up is Crystal Flack. Crystal Flack, are you present?
Yes.
Okay, if you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes to address council.
I'm Crystal Flack. My zip code is 37950, but you will find me in 37914 and 37915 zip code areas daily. I'm here to speak about the East Knoxville Greenway Project, aka Corridor F. This greenway will connect Harriet Tubman Park with the Knoxville Botanical Garden. In March 2024, the city celebrated receiving a $42.6 million federal grant. This grant was eliminated in July 2025 when President Trump defunded this neighborhood access and equity grant program. Despite this, the KCDC Director, Ben Bentley, has stated the city will pursue these projects anyway using local funding sources. Property taxes, sales tax revenue are tax dollars. The current contract with Bard Design Solution for $827,000 is just phase one. You're planning to spend approximately $5 million on this project, according to the City of Knoxville's website. I am here to advocate that East Knoxville does not need this investment in beautification. We need economic empowerment. For decades, East Knoxville has experienced intentional municipal disinvestment. Meanwhile, West Knoxville gets commercial corridors and thriving business districts. South Knoxville gets breweries and new development. North Knoxville gets infrastructure investments, and East Knoxville continues suffering economically and socially due to lack of meaningful economic upliftment. The economic prosperity in our east side community doesn't just lag behind in the rest of Knoxville, they are nonexistent by comparison. Yet the city's leadership response to decades of neglect is to spend millions of our tax dollars on beautification greenways. American Canon has called these greenways "a game changer" that will make Knoxville more equitable and sustainable. But for whom? What happens when you build beautification or greenways through disinvested black neighborhoods? Property values rise, tax increase, long-term residents can't afford to stay, and investors buy property below market value. Legal gentrification. Now let me direct your attention to what East Knoxville needs. Capital for existing businesses, not just programs, but actual money to help black-owned businesses grow and compete. Capital for aspiring entrepreneurs, actual seed funding, and not just workshops about how to write a business plan that we can't get funded anyway. We need ongoing operational support, mentorship, technical assistance, and resources to ensure that these businesses succeed and not just survive. We need community cooperatives where residents can collectively own land and build wealth together. Grocery stores cooperative where we own the stores that serve us. Housing cooperatives where residents own their apartments, not where developers get rich off of tax credits while building so-called affordable housing. This isn't affordable.
Ms. Flack, that concludes your time. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, have a great day.
Next person signed up to speak at public forum is Nicole Skinner. Nicole Skinner, are you present?
Yes.
Okay. If you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes to address council.
My name is Nicole Skinner. I live in Knoxville, I live in Inskip specifically. My friend was abducted by ICE on October 15 after showing up for a routine court appointment. His name is Alejandro, you might have heard of him. I'm one of Alejandro's many, many friends, a few of who you'll be hearing from this evening, but most of whom you'll hear from in the coming weeks if you haven't already. I want to spend some time humanizing my friend because a lot of people and the media have been determined to do the opposite. Alejandro is one of the most selfless, brave, and loving people I know. I've lost track of how many times he has put himself in harm's way in the mere hope that he can help someone else. Every time he got in his car, he knew that being pulled over could mean that he would be separated from his community and the place he's called home for over 20 years. Over 20 years! That's longer than I've lived here. That's probably longer than a lot of us have lived here. Can you clap if you've lived in Knoxville for under 20 years? That never stopped him from loading up his car with donations for our unhoused neighbors or driving to help someone in need. For myself and so many others, he is a rock that we cannot imagine our lives without. We refuse to accept that our lives in Knoxville will be without him. Alejandro is also one of the funniest people I know. His laugh booms through the room, and you can't help, it can't help but make you smile if you weren't already laughing with him. Alejandro believes that no one is a lost cause. He loves this country in a way that I don't even love this country, and we've had in-depth conversations about that. He loves America, he loves this country, he loves this city, this community is his home. Despite everything he's been through, Alejandro has maintained a hopeful and bright spirit that inspires me and so many others to be better. His email signature is "You deserve love, you matter." To his bones, he is just as sweet as you can get. Mayor Kinkanen, I want to address you directly for a moment. Your final term as mayor isn't over yet. As it stands now, your legacy is a shameful one. Your legacy is chopping up our city for parts and handing them over to the highest bidders. Your legacy is riding a tank through a parade when our city needed more leadership than ever. Your legacy is worsening the ongoing gentrification of Knoxville and the impacts that has on our neighbors if they're even able to afford to stay here. Your legacy is saying one thing behind closed doors and another in public, true politician style. I say this not to shame you into further inaction, because you're doing plenty of that already. I say this because, like Alejandro, I believe that no one is a lost cause. Fascism will come for us all, including you all, and I hope that you'll do more than making a cute social media statement and that you'll join us in the fight to bring our friend home and to free all of our neighbors from the cages that they are being kept in due to KPD and KCSO's complicity-
Yeah, Ms. Skinner, that concludes your time.
-and ICE's abduction of our neighbors, including my dear friend. Police-
Ms. Skinner, that's, your time is up. Next person signed up for public forum is Yvonne Yates. Yvonne Yates, are you present? Ms. Yates, if you could go to the podium and turn on the mic, and you'll have up to three minutes to address council. You'll need to turn the microphone on, there's a little button on the base with, has a person's head, yeah. You got it.
Sorry. Hello, I'm Yvonne Yates. I'm back in this area, I'm in South Knoxville now. I worked at Savvy Shnamy for many years, and homelessness is definitely something that's my cause. I'm here today to talk to you about domestic violence with narcissistic abuse. You may or may not know about that, but I sure didn't, and I've helped a lot of people for a lot of time. We came here fleeing another county that would not listen to us. We reported an incident three times to the police. I helped the police for seven years for free. Instead, they would not help me. Alice is a domestic violence burn victim. Our tent was set on fire. Not a tent because I'm poor, I'm a Desert Storm vet. Not a tent because I'm poor, I'm a Desert Storm vet. I was waiting for the city to help me get back in the house I was in. But my narcissist found us, caught a tent on fire. My other dog died in a kennel while I was at church. And Alice lived because a friend that was there, seen what was going on, beat the kennel, got her out. That is not anything any of us want to talk about or understand. A lot of the homeless women that I meet, this has happened, and homeless men. Different things. Maybe your dog hasn't been took out like this, maybe different things, but there's not enough help to get us help. It's not domestic violence like, nobody beat me, I would have, I would have beat him. But it's other manipulative ways. I want to be able to help you guys, to come up with a plan. I'm also going to be helping in South Knoxville to help with our homeless problem any way I can. And that's what I wanted to say, and that I love that Councilman Roberto is still here. I left in 2012. He's here, so I'm glad you're here. I know you're out and I'm in, but you know, that's what it is. Thank you, guys, and I think y'all are doing a great job.
Thank you. Councilmembers, that concludes public forum, and without objection, this meeting is adjourned.